Fellow Roseburg citizens, welcome to our school board meeting. We are excited to see you here tonight. And we hope that you will enjoy yourself and be informative to the things that we're going to share. We start out our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. The flag is there, we'll be all stand, I will start it off. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, and you may be feed it. Next item on the agenda is communication to the board.
Uh, thank you, um, Chair Johnson. Great to see the board tonight and cabinet and all of our participants, thank you for being here. In terms of review of the agenda, there have been a few additional minutes included in the, from the November, or excuse me, October 12th board meeting. We did include a few additional surplus items as well. And included the most recent financial report. It's been included in there. Uh, in terms of communications, uh, wanna welcome who's not here tonight, but joining us remotely is, uh, Director Shortcliff, and he is on Zoom, thank you for joining us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, we have also a student representative report. It's my honor, I met one of them just the other day. Had a pleasure to meet her and her dad. Your turn. Turn on your mic, please.
Hi, everyone, I'm, I'm Emma Kaler, and I'll be speaking on behalf of leadership in school. Um, so in leadership, we have this year a new advisor, we've been very much enjoying her and adjusting to all the new changes we're making as we get out of COVID still. And recently, we had homecoming, it was a great success, our theme was Ages of Hollywood. We actually had a lot of people follow the theme, which is unusual. Um, we've also made birthday cards for every student in the school, we're going month by month, and it's just to make the students feel more included. Um, right now, we're preparing for winter week, which is a week of festivities like dress up days, lunchtime activities, a raffle. And yeah, and we work in committee committees for that, like I said, dress up days, lunchtime activities, raffle and publicity. Um, we will also be decorating around school, just so when the students walk in, they feel ready for winter break, but also ready for the activities coming up. Um, in the future, we're going to be doing middle school connections, this is where we go, groups of us go to different middle schools and we go to their um, leadership classroom. And we try to get them a feel for what leadership is and what its purpose is. And we also talk about what we do in the course, not just outside of it, so it doesn't sound as intimidating. Um, we also have lead awards coming up, this is where we nominate in our class, we nominate students around the school showing pride. Um, for school, we have the fall play right now, we just had the first run through last week, it's Murder on the Orient Express, it's a fun witty murder mystery. Last, um, Thursday, we had a free student preview and lots of students loved in attended. Um, this week is the last week to watch, the dates are November 17th and 18th at seven, 7:00 PM and November 19th at 2:00 PM. Um, the other day, I think yesterday, freshmen have been reading the play in class in their English class, and they actually got to watch the first half of it. And they watched it until the person died, so if they want to find out the rest of who did it, they have to go watch it. Um, with the play, we had, um, lots of help from other clubs like wood shop, welding, and of course, our theater tech crew. Key Club got a grant recently, and they're planning to expand their club to Fremont by, um, making a clothing closet there. Um, we also recently had the book fair for the first time in a while. Conferences went well, we had the, for the first time in forever, teacher, I mean, parents go into the classroom, so that was good. And we also had a lot of student volunteers from other clubs helping parents get around.
My name's Hannah Heiburger, and I'm going to present about sports and then the rest of school. Um, another thing that we had earlier in the year was our college fair. We had colleges from all over the country come, we had, um, students from different school come as well. I went, um, and I feel it was really successful, I learned a lot. Um, we also had military night and other evenings about future plans. Um, today, our seniors took their senior photo during advisory for the yearbook, so that was really exciting. Um, our orange R was awarded second place at best of best competition at the Oregon Journalism Education Association Fall Media Day. Um, that's our newspaper at RHS. Um, and then Link Crew, um, was a big help with welcoming in our freshmen, and that went really successfully. Onto sports, um, all of our sports had a very successful season. Volleyball, um, was really successful, they ended up placing sixth at state. Um, we also had one of our varsity cheerleaders, Shanoa Alexander, she won first place all state. Um, first top finish in Roseburg High School history. Um, and then Colin Curran, also from RHS Cheer, um, took second overall in the mixed male division. Uh, cross country, um, all of the girls on the cross country team went to state, so that was really exciting. And then two of the boys from the boys team went to state as well. Um, GPA was, um, really successful this year in terms of sports. Uh, the girls' cross country team had a GPA of 3.97. Um, girl soccer had a GPA of 3.85. Boys cross country was 3.68, and volleyball had a GPA of 3.61. Um, our fall sports combined had 3.64 GPA, and that's the highest GPA in a long time. So we're all really proud of that. Um, marching band also got their highest score this year at the NWAPA finals. And as a result, Mr. Hanson, he ended up shaving half of his head and half of his beard. Um, and then winter season has just started, and the students are really excited to compete and get those practices started. Thank you.
Are there any questions? I would like to personally compliment the two of you for a job well done. Thank you so very much. Continue the good hard work. It is now time for our student staff recognition. And we're going to, uh, ask the Vice Chair Larson to do the students. And we're gonna move the microphone over and go from there.
All right, um, I'm going to read about some students, and when I call your name, if you want to come up and bring family, teachers, whoever wants to be up here to honor you, um, come stand by Chair, um, Johnson. And we'll take some pictures and things, and we have something to give you. So the first student we're going to recognize is Cameron Bab. Come on up, Cameron, bring your family, bring teachers. They don't want to come, okay, come over here, he's gonna take your picture. All right, let me talk about Cameron. Cameron is an excellent student in many ways, he's an eighth grader and an extremely enthusiastic learner who works hard. He also is very helpful to others in the class and helps others get back on track in a very friendly way. He values each of his classmates as an important individual in the school community, respecting their differences and in turn valuing their input. He's very humble and will be that one student to say, why am I getting an award? So congratulations, Cam.
Thank you very much, thank you all.
All right, our next one, I'll turn it on to Adlib. I could though, because I know this student. Our next one is Holly Brewster, a senior at Roseburg High School. Come on up, Holly. Holly is described as quiet, thoughtful and articulate, she's very knowledgeable yet humble in her approach. She's kind to everyone in class and is always willing to help. Her favorite class is AP Biology, and she's taking part in the high school's nursing assistant program with plans to continue her education and become a nurse. Holly also participates on the swim team and track and field. Uh, teachers report that Holly demonstrates a strong positive work ethic, attention to detail and perseverance in the classroom. She builds connections and friendships with everyone, no matter how they may differ from her. Holly looks for the best in everyone, setting an example for us all. Um, I'm going to add, Holly's an amazing violinist. Um, we don't have an orchestra at the high school, but she's fabulous on the violin, if you ever get that chance to hear her. Um, we need more people like Holly in our world. Congratulations, Holly. Next is Lucas Christensen from Roseburg Virtual School, come on up, Lucas. Lucas is in his second year at RVS. Lucas is an extremely bright young man who is constantly eager to learn, he always pushes to understand why and participates fully, he works hard and does all the work assigned and goes above and beyond. He also has very strong attendance. Lucas has such a unique approach to learning, his questions are always probative and he doesn't simply accept easy answers. RVS loves the way he pushes his teachers and his fellow students to dig deeper. Lucas is a fantastic resource for everyone around him as his inquisitive nature makes everyone interested in knowing. He's such a great student to have in any classroom, and RVS is thankful to have him as such an active member of the fourth through sixth grade class, congratulations, Lucas. Next, we're going to honor Charlisse De La Cruz. Charlisse is described as a student who strives to experience all that life has to offer at RHS, from athletics to clubs to organizations to advanced coursework. The 4.0 student participates in track and is president of Astra and vice president of the National Honor Society. She serves as secretary for FBLA and the Green Team. Along with her academic achievements and strong involvement at school, Charlisse is known as an especially positive social influence among her peers. Always ready to offer support to someone who's struggling and demonstrating the value of accepting and supporting others. Her involvement in community service activities also demonstrates the compassionate difference adolescents can make in society. Anyone who gets to know Charlisse knows she's destined to do great things, congratulations. And last night, we'd like to honor Emma Cat Markert from Fremont Middle School. Emma brings a feeling of joy and playfulness to the classroom with her enthusiasm, kindness and work ethic. She's creative, artistic and inclusive with students. Emma embodies Fremont's epic values and is widely known for being active in the school community, taking courses such as drama and choir and participating in extracurricular activities and FBLA. Each day, she arrives at class with a strong desire to learn, equally strong is her determination to support her classmates. If she sees someone struggling, she makes it a point to help rather than ignore. Emma is naturally curious as an individual, and she strives for deeper understanding in the content of class. Overall, Emma is a fantastic student. Congratulations, Emma.
It is indeed an honor to recognize our students. They try so hard to achieve, and we were, are supporting them, and we'd like you to continue to do that. Is now an opportunity, we support some of our staff people. And the first one I have the honor of introducing tonight is Robin Crabtree, Office Manager here at RVS. Let me share with each of you what I have been told. What doesn't Robin do? She's always willing to help with anything thrown her way. She is the first person families meet, and she is always very welcoming. Robin has been a champion of families, staff, and more importantly, the students of RVS from day one. She assists families with technical issues, orientation, and all the tricky aspects of navigating online instructions. She adds her talent of graphic design to the visual advertising of programs and events. And believes wholeheartedly in the work and school culture being built here at RVS. Her HR papers will deem her an office manager. But at RVS, she is so much more. As the face of this school, she represented superbly. Congratulations, Robin. Our next honoree tonight is Ashley Fifth. Ashley wears all of the hats, and she wears them very well. No one is more dedicated to ensuring kudos are tree reading to the best of their ability. And she is relentless in her quest to provide every student what they need. Not only is she leading interventions with students and supporting teachers, she is overseeing the district-wide IRLA initiative. She is balancing the task of implementing a new system with reflection on feedback from what teachers and building leaders are witnessing during this implementation. Ashley has such a heart to find such a way for students to succeed wherever they are. Congratulations, Ashley. Our next honoree is Lyndy Ferguson from Sunny Slope. Lyndy is known for her willingness to always jump in and provide support where needed. She brings compassion and knowledge to the classroom and connects with students in a positive way. Lyndy is dedicated to the Sunny Slope staff and also sits on the school's positive behavioral interventions and support committee. She is willing to go out of her way to help students and the school, whether she's tracking down pizza for the kids or helping school fundraisers. She cares deeply for each student's learning and success. Congratulations, Lyndy. And also from Sunny Slope, we have Jenny Folsom. Jenny works so hard with so many different grade levels. It's amazing to see her in action. She is so kind and patient with all students, not only those she teaches. She is always willing to accept students into her room when they need a break. Jenny is described as caring and compassionate hard worker. She is kind and inclusive with all staff members and wears a ready smile daily. Her optimistic outlook, her ability to communicate with students and families, and her skill and expertise in managing her classroom are a few of the reasons why she is so amazing. Congratulations, Jenny. On behalf of the board, it is indeed an honor to present these awards and to make the difficult choices to choose a select few every month. We are very excited that you're here tonight. If you'd like to stay for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome to do so. If not, I'm going to take a three and a half minute break and allow each of you to like to go to say goodnight. God bless you and be with you all.
Hey, great job, nice work. Girls, awesome job tonight, thank you. Emma, great job, thank you. Hannah, great job, thank you. Thank you, great job tonight. Yeah, just because I thought the cadence here was nice, and it's nice to have the podium where you don't have to walk down far. They were supposed to go, they were gonna go together, but maybe it's too far back.
Good job, baby.
Great job, both of you, well done, and great job cutting them loose right after that. Good job cutting them loose right after that. Look at Chelsea getting ready to do a story on stage, see that? I said grab some kids, get a quick story, you know? That worked, they did great with that, and the only thing they, that you didn't do that you thought you were gonna do is join both of your pictures.
It felt weird.
But it actually felt right the way it happened.
I thought it was gonna feel weird if I walked over, I, I waited for a second, and I went, no, he's got it.
Yeah, just call an audible, Papa John.
I see that the table, that the way that it's angled, I couldn't get closer to the crowd, like the third, the one table that was pointing out.
It's a little awkward. This is what you get for a quarter million dollars. You know, I had to buy, that's still too soon for me to talk about it, but we've had to spend a lot of money on these tables. They're really nice tables.
They're very nice.
And they can. Yes. Yes, and they were expensive.
Yeah, well.
Because they had, yeah. Yeah, I know. And we had that as a reminder.
All right.
We will, we'll resume our meeting. The consent agenda, please. I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? See none, consent agenda is passed. The next item, we will allow for public participation. We welcome you to share your interests. We have asked Assistant Superintendent D to monitor the clock two minutes. If anybody's online that would like to do that, then we have a raise your hand feature. At this point, if you are here, we set the microphone there yet? We need to set the microphone and the sign in sheet.
Okay. And you said turn it maybe toward the board. Like the podium there, just turn that podium.
Turn the whole podium around. There you go, very good, like that, good. Okay, be sure to state it, be sure the mic is on, be sure to state your name and sign it on the sheet, please.
I trust I don't need to do that again. Okay, my apologies. I'm generally just loud enough that I don't have to worry about it. Fair enough. So this is done in the auspices of giving us time to engage in professional development. And while more time to gain, to engage in professional development is valuable, and the professional development itself is valuable. The notion of giving us time is predicated on a falsehood. You cannot create time. That time instead must be borrowed or stolen from elsewhere. There is no teacher who shows up at the beginning of a day and kicks their heels up in their classroom and waits for kids to show up. We all use that time before and after school to do other things in addition to our prep periods. But before and after school, we attend IEP meetings, we attend 504 meetings, we make behavior plans, we respond to parent emails and phone calls. Um, we monitor hallways and the unloading or loading of buses, we engage in planning, we are creating, copying, scanning or uploading resources to the Canvas platform or using hard copies for those kids who need it, depending on how we're going to differentiate that level of instruction. We are grading things and we are providing feedback of varying degrees of detail to students so that they can improve in their learning. But this is not time that we simply have to spare. If you elongate the teacher's workday by 15 minutes, it will either eat into the front end or the back end of that time, in which case there are tasks we will be unable to perform or will be unable to perform to the same degree of quality for the students. In this case, elongating the day, although it creates with air quotes, the additional hour to spend on another day of the week that as yet is to be determined, I saw some contention about that in the last work session. It does not create time or take time that is otherwise not being used. Grading takes our prep periods, it takes before and after school, responding to emails takes our prep periods, it takes before and after school, the meetings occur before and after. The meetings occur before and after school. Please consider these things as you move forward with any plans regarding professional development or modifying a teacher's workday. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
So it's green? We want it to be green? Okay. So my name is Kristen Brooks and this is my 16th year in the district as a science teacher at Roseburg High School. And I would like to start by saying that I appreciate that there's been some consideration in what time teachers are gonna spend on professional development and improving our practice within student learning. But what I would also like to clarify is that I know at the high school, the high school teachers are feeling very overscheduled right now. More has been asked of us every year. In addition, we have been teaching through and continue to recover from our global pandemic. And this impacts every aspect of our job. To be clear, high school teachers are asking for more time. What we are not asking for is more scheduled school-wide PD time. We are asking for more time to deal with the realities of being a teacher today. We are asking for more prep time. We are asking for more time to work collaboratively in our own department-focused areas and look at data to improve our lesson planning and practice. We are asking for more time to be able to contact parents and students via phone or email. We are asking for more time to grade so we can receive, so students can receive authentic and timely feedback to target their learning. We need to, we need time to implement the strategies that are introduced in our school-wide professional development. This again requires time to work collaboratively in our department-focused teams. Teachers are feeling the pressure of time. As professionals, we all want to do the best job we can for our students and families. The reality is our greatest challenge always comes down to time. As planning begins for next year, I hope that all stakeholders can have an active part in the discussion. The decision should not be taken lightly. Whether those stakeholders decide to continue with an hour of school-wide PD or add an additional hour or make adjustments to some other model, what teachers are not looking for is more of the same type of very busy school-wide PD that has been provided. What we are asking for is more time to do the work that we need to do. And the teacher shortage we are currently experiencing also weighs heavy. Adding more structured time to teachers already overflowing plates is not going to alleviate the pressure we are already experiencing. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Isadora Trinkle. I'm the music teacher at Sunny Slope and also the union representative. Do you know how long it takes to set up 30 xylophones? How about how long it takes to manage three timeouts? Because one friend got the tambourine that another friend wanted and so a third friend decided they would help by hitting them with a third tambourine. How about the reports I have to write for that incident? Or how about to visit the staff bathroom? Because now that I'm outside the fence, I have to go all the way around to the front to make it. Passing period is not an invisible break and it's foolish to think otherwise. There is no invisible time in a teacher's day. These incredibly hard workers fill each and every second with thousands of tasks that pile up every time somebody has a meltdown or God help us, fire drill. That just throws off the whole day. More than half of teachers make up that time outside their contracted hours. Planning, copying, before and after school, that's also the only time the copier room is not full of other people also trying to make 300 copies for an entire school. To say nothing of how children behave. Children are not computers. They don't really run on a schedule like that. You can't set a timer for them to be just ready instantly and done immediately. Kindergarteners do need time to walk as they put their scissors away. I believe that trying to nickel and dime a teacher's workday is the worst faith interpretation of what we asked for. We asked for more time for PD because we are working on such a long curriculum. I'm looking three, four, seven, eight weeks into the future and I don't have time to implement the suggestions that PD has given to me. I would love to use the time effectively to bring those suggestions to my classroom and I don't have time before somebody asks me to give feedback on it and work on the next thing, by the way. To be explicit, I need the district to prioritize the tasks you need me to do. And I also ask you to treat our profession with the dignity and respect that it deserves. Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Devin Bowen. I teach science at the high school. We just honored two of my students tonight. I was very excited about that. Today in AP Biology, I took a concept, oxidation and reduction reactions, a concept that they barely covered in the regular chemistry class and we built on it and then we built on it again and again and again and again. I dumped bucket loads of things that I needed them to grasp and master by tomorrow. AP Biology is a very, very difficult course and the students in that class are some of the best students we have at the high school. And there's days I wonder how they are able to come to school the next day mastering the concepts I'm expecting them to do. I'm not entirely sure. I would have been able to do it when I was in high school. Now, applying this to our PDs, I, first, I want to say I appreciate the, we got an opportunity through email to give you feedback on how we feel about that and I really appreciate that. But after speaking to some of my colleagues, I wanted to make known the concept that when we get these PDs, they're awesome and they're good and I'd love to implement them. And then we also get the next week to implement. But we're sitting in there, I'm with my other science teachers and we have so many things to tackle in that time. Very large fires to put out that we do great things during that time. But we want to, we want to put those fires out and implement the professional development that we received the previous week. So I love the idea of giving us more time. I want more time to implement the things that we did learn in the PD. So, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Jackson. This is my 30th year of teaching and 20th at, in the Roseburg Public Schools. I'm here tonight because I want to thank you. I want to thank you for prioritizing students and staff members' safety and security for the first time in the 20-plus years I've been in the district that has been a priority. So thank you. Because of your decision, teachers and students at RHS, privately located in the old main or the Heritage Building, are learning now in classrooms with doors that both lock and close, where windows don't fall on the heads of those who open them, where floors aren't caving in and where there is actually heat and ventilation. However, because the decision was made just two days before school got out last June, the decision has also pushed us into a reactionary crisis response mode instead of a proactive thoughtful one. Our principal, Dr. Weber, had to figure out where the 20 teachers who taught in the Heritage Building were going to be placed. 20 teachers is the size of an elementary school. Maybe bigger based on some of the ones we saw tonight. And in a matter of weeks, Dr. Weber had orchestrated a plan to find new locations for these teachers. This meant that computer labs had to be shut down to become classrooms. Walls had to be built, chalkboards replaced with whiteboards, lighting added, classrooms combined. We had to ask over 20 teachers to come in over the summer in un-air-conditioned classrooms and work for hours to pack up classrooms. Mine, you know, has been sitting there for 20 years. Our incredible custodial staff deserves to be thanked. They moved 20 classrooms worth of books, filing cabinets, desks, and supplies in addition to preparing rooms in the Commons Building that had not been used in over a decade, in addition to everything else they had to do over the summer. Tracy from District Maintenance, they built walls. They painted and installed lighting to create usable classroom space from what was storage rooms and computer labs. Currently, we still have four teachers sharing classrooms. And currently, six of us remain in the Heritage until those modulators are ready. All of those are either PE teachers or English teachers. My English department, 13 of us have been spread out all over campus. We no longer have a staff room that we can chair, a place where we can collaborate or work together with the curriculum. The modulators that were purchased are still unusable. Even though we are, yes, waiting for electricity, those modulators are in no way ready for students, let alone are they safe and secure. There's no shelving. There's no cabinets, no whiteboards. There are fewer electrical outlets in my hundred, than in my 100-year-old classroom. Power strips are gonna be crisscrossing the floors once again. There are no blinds on the windows. There are no security cameras. Except for the porch lights at each door, there's no outdoor lighting. They are far removed from student and staff bathrooms. They are located closer to the bike trail and the bridge than the main office. In fact, the only thing that separates them from bellows and the freeway is a flimsy chain link fence.
Rachel, your time is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. My timer was really quiet.
I want to thank everybody for prioritizing. I, that's sincere from the bottom of my heart. I just beg of you to realize that the work is far from done. And we need some decisions with some really clear intentions, support, and resources. So thank you.
Is there anyone online who would like to participate?
Robin, you can go ahead. Just please state your name first.
Hi, my name is Robin Huston. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Fullerton 4. I think this is my eighth year in the district. And I just wanted to express that I work well over 45 hours a week. It easily pushes closer to 50. Preparing thoughtfully, so many transitions in a kindergartner's day really requires an immense amount of time. It requires an immense amount of communication with our assistants. And the amount of planning and communication that is necessary is, uses a lot of time. And I am extremely concerned that if taking more of my prep time happens, then it will push further into outside hours. So I would hope that would be considered when decisions are made. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Amanda Haga and I teach at Fullerton 4. I teach fifth grade. And I just wanted to touch again on the time that some of my colleagues have addressed as far as the, you know, if we're giving 15 here to get 15 here, it's not that we're gaining more time. As Robin said, we spend well over our normal contracted hours just getting our regular job done. So if we are giving that 15 to student contact time throughout the week, that's another 15 that I'm putting in of my own time that's not in my contract. I wasn't gonna speak today, but I happened to glance at an email I received that I wanted to share with you. As I was sitting here, I received an email forwarded from my principal about an additional professional development that we are now going to be having to receive some training on some lessons that were created to teach tribal history. The email was forwarded from Michelle and it says, in short, that we have these lessons. They originally were just designed for fourth grade and now fifth grade regarding tribal history. Towards the bottom, it says, "I am also working on a plan to offer additional professional development to teachers." So we keep getting more and more types of trainings forwarded to us. So the time isn't being dedicated to those trainings that we already have. We're spending our class day having to plan for, or we're having to plan for subs so that we can have professional developments during our school day. We know that our subs are not able to do the same job that we are, that we do with our students. We usually have to make up lessons that are like, get on the Chromebook with the students. So our professional developments are now happening during our school day as well.
I'm Angelie. I teach fifth grade at Fullerton. And I just wanted to, Amanda didn't have time to say all the things I think that she wanted to say. But one of the things is that on elementary level, we are learning new reading curriculums right now. We are learning a new health curriculum. There was a new writing curriculum, I think. There's like four curriculums that we're trying to implement this year. And so trying to find more time on top of all of that, not to mention with the escalating behaviors that we're seeing. It's, just feels like constant chaos. That's how it feels to be an elementary school teacher right now, is just constant chaos. So that can't be good for us and it certainly cannot be good for the students.
Hello, my name is Christina Kelso. I am currently the physical education teacher at Sunny Slope Elementary. I'm a veteran teacher of 30 years and I would like to be the voice of our less experienced newer teachers that, again, on our, my colleagues have said piled on more and more. We have, I don't know what the percentage of teachers that we have that are brand new to our district, brand new to teaching. Some of them right now are working on a bachelor's degree. Some of them are working on a licensure, teaching license. And for them to get more PD, right now, they're just trying to learn the curriculum. They're trying to be the best teacher they can be. They don't understand exactly how curriculum works. They're trying to learn behavior management. So I am in support of our teachers, our beginning teachers needing not PD, but time to collaborate with veteran teachers, time to understand curriculums. Like Angelie said, we have health, a new health curriculum for elementary, new math, new ERLA, how to teach reading. They're, they're just so brand new to teaching that I, 30 years ago, I can remember just going home and being so exhausted from teaching and not knowing what I'm gonna teach tomorrow. I can't imagine being a new teacher today. Also, if I, timer hasn't rang yet. If there's something we need to work on is regular attendance. Also, if I, timer hasn't rang yet. If there's something we need to work on is regular attendance. Our superintendent said on the last work session that 56% have regular attendance. You know what that means? Only 56% of our students have 90% attendance. That means two or less days. They are missing two or less days of a month. That means the other 44% are missing more than two days a month of school. We need our kids to be in school. I'm, I'm very concerned. So, thank you. Thank you for your time and being on the board.
All right, we have time for one more and we have one hand raised online. So Denise, go right ahead.
Sorry, there, got it. Had to unmute, sorry. I can't hear me. Yes, okay. I just wanted to really quickly just touch on the, for years and years, as a teacher here, I've been teaching in Roseburg for 20 years. I was an IA before that. When I was first student teaching, we adopted investigations and then we didn't have a math curriculum for a long time. And so we were piecing together a math curriculum. And it takes a lot of time. And now we're doing that with reading. And we adopted wonders, but now we're, and I could see the benefits of ERLA and I appreciate that we're all trying to help kids. Piecing things together, hopping around, leaving this out, putting this back in is very challenging even for veteran teachers. And like Chris was saying, it's challenging for our new teachers. And we know the standards, but it's not necessarily always right where you need it to be in the curriculum. I appreciate I ready, the ready classroom. I appreciate the curriculums we've been given because at least I know I can see this lesson goes to the standard and it goes in a flow. And right now, we're kind of putting it together and I feel like it's a lot. And then learning the, the ERLA program and how to put in data, it's and we do need time. I'm just not sure where it's going to come from. So, thank you. Thank you for your efforts to help kids. We appreciate that. But I would like to see us all on the same team. And I, I'm disheartened a little bit that maybe we're, we're not and there's some disconnect. So, please hear us. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the board, we are very grateful and very appreciative for you to come out tonight and share your concern and your thoughts. We're going to move forward on our agenda for tonight. The first item is the student investment, investment account report from Assistant Superintendent Neat.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. Just hitting my screen up so I can share with the people that are online. Okay, there we go. All right, so every year at this time, we are required to present our final report for the Student Investment Act for the previous school year. So this is the final report for the 2122 Student Investment Account for Roseburg Public Schools. As a reminder, and the purposes of the Student Investment Account are to meet students' mental and behavioral health needs. And also to increase academic achievement and reduce academic disparities for students of color, students with disabilities, emerging bilingual students and students navigating poverty, homelessness and foster care. In our Student Investment Account Plan, our SIA Plan, we have four strategies. Strategy one is to create a culture of safety and respect for all students and adults that supports the social, emotional and physical well-being of students and adults that is critical to academic and professional success. Strategy two is to ensure instructional materials and tasks are appropriately challenging and supportive for all students. Are aligned with content area standards and are culturally and academically relevant. Strategy three is establish systems and interventions to identify and remove barriers to graduation for all students. And strategy four is to ensure educators and families have the tools to support academic success for every student. And for the 2220, 2122 school year, our SI grant was a little over 4.2 million. And the four areas that the investments are in are class size, well-rounded education, instructional time and health and safety. Some of our SIA plan investments, we are purchasing books to grow PK-12 classroom libraries. And we are paying for three special education teachers, eight special education instructional assistants, four elementary teachers to reduce class sizes, six middle school teachers to expand elective CTE options for students, two middle school toses, purchasing of the ERLA for eight elementary schools. And also, the big one is to ensure access to before and after-school programs, electives and extracurricular activities for all students. And this area also removed all fees for our students to access anything in the district this year. And that's around $450,000. We also have a social emotional learning coordinator, two school psychologists, 10 skills trainers. So our eight elementary schools and two middle schools, we added skills trainers for them. Our elementary STEAM teachers come from our SIA plan as well, investments. Materials for STEAM, two, the addition of two elementary music teachers. So every elementary school has a dedicated music teacher. We're paying for one health school, high school health and wellness teacher. And it also funds the juvenile justice diversion online program. For 2223, you'll receive an update in January at that board meeting on what we are investing in for the 2223 school year. Just wanted to let you know that it's about, it's a little over 4.3 million for the 2223 school year. Are there any questions?
So did we spend all the money?
Yes, we are required to spend all the money by the end of each school year.
Do you, any other questions?
Do you anticipate along the same lines or will you give us?
So for the 2223 school year, it's the same investments. The plan implies for three years, so that this school year's investments are the same as last school year. We're in the process of and will start doing engagement with staff, students and families. Our new plan has to be written along with our high school success plan. Our Perkins Grant, there's multiple plans that have been connected together now. And that is due at the end of March. So we will be collecting input to write our new SIA plan. That'll be another three-year plan and that'll be submitted at the end of March.
I personally would like to thank you, Assistant Superintendent Neat, for preparing this report and sharing it with the board. Let me remind the board that this is a information data, no action is required tonight. But giving you the report to us is required by the Oregon Department of Education. So we're fully compliant, we are complying with all of the rules. Next item on the agenda is the, and I want to thank Michelle, you did a great job. I appreciate it. Item number two is the OFBA Board of Directors election. And we have an opportunity to vote on this region representative for the Legislative Committee. Our candidate is Jacqueline Crook, who had been nominated by South Coast ESD in Coos Bay. Her candidate questionnaire and resume can be found in your packet on page 4243. And we anticipate having you share your thoughts tonight before we take a vote to move forward.
I so move that we nominate Jacqueline Crook to fill this position.
I'll second. It has been moved in second to Jacqueline Crook as our representative. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? See none? Motion carried. Item number three is request to approve the OFBA 2223 legislative priorities and principles. They're found in your package on page 4447. I need a motion to approve.
I so move.
Second.
I'll second that.
Ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Item number four for tonight is Board Policy Section J. For the second reading and adoption, is attached and Mr. Freeman has been generous to share his action.
Thank you, Chair Johnson. We have an audience today, so I'd like to just let the audience know that the board has been engaged in a process for a little over a year now to update our policies. The last time the Roseburg School Board did a complete review of their policies was around 1997. So they have spent hours working with OSBA to review policies to ensure that we're up to date, we're following regulation, compliance. And I want to recognize the people on that committee. That's directed by Director Cotton and Mr. Lee and Ms. Kermit are on that. Along with Superintendent Corden and Assistant Superintendent Neat. Spend, they spend hours and hours working and making sure that the policies are up to date. Today in front of you is the second reading for J, which is the student section of our policies. I know at the last meeting, we had some questions about certain policies. Remember that policies are fluid and can be adjusted at any time. So in front of you for consideration today is the second reading and adoption of Section J.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a motion to approve? I'll move that we approve Section J as it is. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
It has been moved in second to approve the second reading and adoption of Policy J. Are we ready for the book, for the question? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number five is Board Policy Section K/L. For the first reading is located in your package and Mr. Freeman, you're up again.
Yes, thank you again. So Section KL is the District and Community Relations section of your board policies. And this is for first reading for consideration. And remember that first reading is brought to you and then you can review it and bring adjustments to that committee. And then we'll bring it back at a future board meeting for a second reading and adoption.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I would move that we approve KL at this point.
Do we have a second?
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Are we ready for the question? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Directly, I think it would carry.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment? This review of the agenda of the policies has been a lot of work. In part because the policies have to be reactive to changes in statute and changes in State Department of Education policy and changes in lots of different things. And it can get overwhelming for us to try to do that individually. We did have the help of somebody from OSBA that came down and told us what the law was. We had some attempt, some ability to tailor the language. But it really was a major problem of just getting things to be in line with what the state requires. I was at the state school board convention over this last weekend. I attended a meeting of school board attorneys in which they said that in December, we're going to get a dump of new required or recommended policies, specifically dealing with that crazy thing we dealt with of the different notice requirements for all the different sort of complaints you might get. So I suspect that even though we've been adopting this and bringing it up to date, we're going to be looking at some of these things again in the next few months. It's, it's so much fun.
Director Lee, I want to co-sign your compliment. I believe the subcommittee that worked on the policy put in a tremendous amount of time and very diligent and very detailed to get such a massive scope done. I'm very grateful. Next item on the agenda is the reports. And first up is our superintendent.
Thank you very much. Chair Johnson, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. I'm just wondering, Melissa, would you mind if it's okay, minimal with the board? Maybe we can turn, we've got a lot of people here that stayed tonight. I have a report, I think people might be interested because I've got some survey results and things. But the board's okay with that. We'll just return that screen. So people online will be able to see the beautiful board faces, but they'll be looking at this report anyway. So there we go. All right. Everyone at the table here should have a copy of this, but I want to just start tonight by thanking, thanking the community for coming to the meeting. I really appreciate our staff coming to the meeting. I appreciate the authenticity of the staff and the interest in this discussion. And I am grateful for our staff. I'm grateful for our board. I'm grateful for our kids. And it, I don't know that I've had a board meeting where I haven't said that, and I mean that. We have amazing staff here. We have great kids here and we have a really dedicated board here. And I want to thank the, thank the people who spoke tonight for their authenticity. And I also want to reiterate tonight that the genesis of this discussion around time has been entered into from a place of authenticity. It really has, the discussion around time and how to support staff comes from a place of concern and care for our kids and our staff. And the, the feedback we've gotten, I'll talk about the survey tonight, but even, even in the public presentation is part of how we do business here. We really want to have an organization that understands deeply the needs in our classroom. That understands the needs our kids are facing, that can, you know, balance those things in a smart way with how to organize and have a system that thinks about being informed by kids and parents and staff members. So I think that's important to talk about tonight. So one of the things I want to start with tonight is is about professional learning. So as the board knows, we had a discussion last board meeting about professional learning. And, and I'm appreciative of the discussion because it did start a discussion that we can have tonight and in the future about different ways to think about how to provide support for our staff and our kids. Sometimes these conversations get tricky as we start to think about different ways to do things. We don't always have all the details of that. And so I, but I appreciate the, the prompt for that. And so one thing we knew we needed to do is reach out and talk to staff. And we sent a staff survey out to all staff regardless of their current position, regardless of how many hours they teach, what their current role is. And we received 282 responses. It was an anonymous survey. There could be questions about, you know, potentially about reliability. Could someone vote, you know, because someone put their comments in twice? Sure, they could have. I don't think that happened. But we did, we did something I think was smart, but it made it a little more tricky to segregate the data. And that was, we had two narrative questions, which I thought were important to have. We asked a question about does, does the professional learning structure work for you? And then some ideas on that. Then just a question, there's probably the most interesting question, which was just other things you want to share. And we heard, I don't know, going through the survey results for quite a bit about that. But I think it's important to re-ground ourselves in why professional learning is important and how it relates to the board's goals. The board, you and I share the same goals, which I think says something about an organization when a superintendent and board share the same goals. But really, we're focused on the care, support and instruction kids need to be successful, to graduate with a plan to be successful. And what, what I know is this, that when teachers teachers and leaders have time to digest, we heard this tonight, and understand and practice things that we see improvement in student outcomes. So again, the why behind this discussion is very clear to me, and that is how do we make sure that we have, we organize a system so that there is time for learning and practice of adults that leads to learning through practice for students? So let me share these results with you. So there's two, this is kind of a, there's two things happening in each of these slides. The first one is just kind of the raw data. We had 282 responses, a little over 65% of respondents, when asked the question, are you satisfied with the professional model, said they weren't. And there was about 20% said they were satisfied, and about 15% said they didn't know, which actually, I think, I've wondered about this, and I actually appreciate people who said they're not sure. Because if you were to ask me this question, I would have questions about whether I know, if this is the only thing I've done, do I know it's been successful? There's not a lot of ways to maybe gauge that question. So there was some question, I think, that our staff had, like, I'm not really sure. It could be sure about the survey or the question, but I think some people were maybe saying, I'm not, I'm not really sure, maybe it's the only thing they experienced. Quarter of the respondent licensed or sort of that were, half and five percent were confidential slash admin staff. Another way to look at the results from this was this, we took results by job classification, if you go in far left of those who said they were satisfied, you'll see licensed staff in yellow, classified staff in reddish, and then admin staff and classified staff in blue, or admin, excuse me, and confidential in blue, and that gives you the break, what the click of who did, were satisfied. This is not being satisfied, and who was in that category, I'm not sure. So there were definitely some themes that, that came through, really through the narrative pieces of this. There were hundreds of responses that were narrative. And I want to just talk about a couple of the really key takeaways. Without a doubt, in the responses, three things were very, very consistent. Oftentimes said almost in the exact same way. And really, I felt very comfortable bundling these in these three takeaways. And the first one is our staff cares deeply about student learning, and they care deeply about our students being well. That was reiterated on both narrative sets of questions. Another takeaway was that staff wants to help create a system that allows kids to be successful in the classroom and outside the classroom. And then the majority of the respondents, this may have been the, the most narrative. If I, if you just look at, if, if you were to highlight the, the word, you know, the amount of times that collaboration comes up, implementation comes up, the majority of the respondents in this do agree, kind of like we heard tonight, that time to implement and collaborate on professional learning is definitely needed. But they also want more time for planning and preparation. And a lot of that came through the conversation, kind of we heard tonight, to implement, to implement what's being asked. The themes there were more collaboration time, more choice, more time to implement, and planning and differentiation. There's a couple of quotes there that are probably really are worth mentioning tonight. I'll just read these, I know you can read on your own, but for those that are listening online, our current Wednesday PDS's quote or release has value, or it still falls short when it comes to meeting the needs of teachers having consistent time in their classrooms to plan next steps. Another respondent, we can never dive deeply into the work, so we can't get traction. Another respondent, there's never enough time to really learn and practice. Although we don't have enough time, also, we don't have enough time to collaborate with our colleagues. So let's talk about next steps. So tonight, I am not recommending that we are making each, just to our current model at this time. What I am recommending is that we work with staff and continue to ask questions and be thoughtful about developing a professional learning model that best serves our staff and our kids. This is going to, this is going to require some more conversation, some more thinking, some more design, asking more questions. And because we know that, and if we think, if we take this back from the board's perspective, the strategic plan, which drives our work, professional learning is a critical and key component of our strat plan. If we take a look at the two, if we take a look at two of those levers in the strat plan around appropriate and timely instruction, in there, it says that teachers will have the resources they need to effectively support and scaffold student learning. We also go to the side of effective operations that will align district resources and establish data enforcement systems to support exceptional teaching environments. We have a responsibility to provide professional learning. It's important for us to meet our goals that we do that. And, and I would say the other two levers around leadership development and safe and inclusive fall into what, what PD should help us do. So tonight, I'm not coming with a recommendation, I don't think we're ready for a recommendation on changes, but I will work internally and externally with staff to have a better understanding of some design, and I'll, I'll be working, bringing something to you in the future on that. All right, want to talk for a few minutes about math. I mentioned this last time at our board meeting, I want to just dig into this a little bit. I want to start with a statement that came from, we have a project team meeting, a project team group around math, these are our math leaders at our secondary schools and our administrators at our secondary schools. It also involves Assistant Superintendent Lee and myself. And I'd want to start by just saying that we're preparing kids for a world in which they need to be mathematical thinkers, not just mathematical doers. And the ability to think and create and communicate effectively is, is an essential skill to being a successful, productive member in a dynamic global society. And with that in mind, we are on some redesigned math. We met last week, we're, we're taking a look at the two plus one model. I mentioned that last week, I'll talk about that for a few minutes tonight. And what we're doing right now is developing those foundation documents and that foundational philosophy that will help us update our math sequence and eventually come to the board in the spring with a math adoption plan and a PD plan. So this is a bit of a zoom in, just so the board's aware, if you hear of math two plus one at the high school level, strange name, because some people are saying you guys are doing addition two plus one, what's that work really supposed to be? It's actually kind of an interesting name, but this is what, what the two plus one model is. And this will be, we're working to six 12, so we'll see some different sequencing in our six through 12 and more alignment and articulation six 12. But what this looks like is the two part of math is a credit that's focused on algebra, one essentially that has function and number premise, we'll look at the standards in algebra one, then moving to a geometry and data science and statistics component of that second year. And then from there, kids will have some options in three different pathways, a calculus pathway, a data science pathway, and then a quantitative pathway. And so we have work to do in this group. And part of what the board needs to know is that for those on the curriculum instruction committee in January, Dr. Weber and a group of working on some new courses that we're going to bring to the curriculum instruction group for board approval, that will then come to the whole board. We have forecasting our secondary schools in February. We'll begin math pilots sometime in the spring, probably second semester, and then eventually end up as we compile all this data and a plan for that involves professional learning and how, what that should look like coming to the board in May or June. I'm excited about the, the, the work we're doing. There's some things on the right-hand side in green, you can see that what we envision in our math classrooms, we have some great, some great examples of math in our school district, and we want to expand those as we, in a parallel track, support those as well. All right, getting close to the end here, I want to give you a quick, a few quick updates on some safety and security items that the board has directed the district to work on, and so want to make sure we leave some space for this. Let's talk first about visitor management. We have a new visitor management system that you're aware of, the Raptor system. We started implementation of that in a few schools last week and all schools this week on Monday. The rollout is, has been, has gone relatively well, there have been some hiccups, some bumps and a couple of things. First day had 138, I believe, sure, that was the number, 138 bless you. People that we were able to make sure we check in and scan, and when they are into our buildings, when we're inviting them into the buildings, they go through a process of making sure that we know they're, who they are, they can get badged, and they'll have a timer there. Visitor management, the Raptor system also does scan for level three sex crimes as well. Overall, want to thank our staff for rolling this out in buildings and here at the district, it's gone relatively well, and it does provide another layer of protection for our kids. There's some information here about where we're at with fencing. This is the first phase of fencing that we're doing right now. So that's therefore, I want to read through all those, we're working with the contractors, both local contractors on this, and they're moving as quickly as they can get staff and materials. And then on the vestibules, we're in the design process with the vestibules. We have moved toward the process to do architectural renderings, not just, not just design renderings, or moving to contracting with an architecture, architect firm on that. For elementary schools, we're waiting materials at Fremont, and we're in the design process and waiting materials at Joe Lane for our vestibules. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about some cool things our staff has been about, as well as our kids. This is one of 100 things I could have picked up, but it was Veterans Day this month, and we had just an example of how our staff and our kids is involved and, and really supporting community-wide efforts to, in this case, celebrate veterans. But in many cases, it's many other things across our community, and you'll see whether it's FFA and first responders, the marching band, supporting with the parade downtown Fremont students donating to the, to the veterans. Are, I'm grateful to work for an organization who understands the value of community and gives back in our community. So with that, happy to answer any questions tonight. Okay, Chair Johnson?
Good question, thank you very much for your timeliness of your report and the depth of it. Let me add, if I may, when the directors go home between now and the next meeting, if you see something that you'd like to expand on, feel free to call Director Cardone and share with him so that we can continue moving forward. It is time for the director's report. Director Kirk?
I don't have anything to report tonight, thank you.
I'm just full of stuff. I could talk about at great length of the different things that happened over the weekend, all the different topics, but it's the end of the meeting, and I wouldn't get very deep into any of those things anyway. So I'm just going to shut my mouth up and let you guys ask me questions later if you want to.
You know, I always have some things. I, I just, I appreciate how willing the district office is. Anytime that you do come and have questions and want some clarification, they're always quick to respond back with some details. And just looking forward to more information on the the new policies too that are coming our way. You know, just, we're always wanting to, you know, interpret them in the light of our, our area and our district and, and being in compliance always, because that's what we have to do. But if there's ever any, any you know, concern about that, I always feel like we're able to make some adjustments or make it so that it's feasible for our district. And I, I just appreciate that in the committee feeling like that's, we're like-minded on that.
Thank you very much. Being the board chair, I'd like to share my personal highlights. Three granddaughters were married to the board. Actually, I'm easy to hurt, making statements of nothingness and sounding off the words and not reading. I mentioned a few board meetings when you know, we scheduled a board meeting starting at 6:01 PM. First day of Halloween, so I think we're going to get a little bit of food. Because the other day, we were going to go to night. Maybe we're going to do that everyone? Happy holidays.